All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Jeremy, will you please call roll call?
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
This is Mick Mackin.
Here.
This is Mars.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here. All right, if everyone stands for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I need a motion for the approval of the May 14th agenda.
So moved.
Steve, we have a second? Sean with the second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Same sign, or all those opposed, same sign? All right. Agenda is approved. Now we need a motion for the approval of the April 25th, 2024 minutes. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All right, Kelly and Sean. All right, so we have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right. Motion passes. Now we have nothing for hearing of the public items. We're going to go right to treasurer's report.
All right, good evening. What we have on schedule for tonight is our May five-year forecast. And I can't say that too much has changed from what we had in November, so that's sort of a good thing. Our property tax collections will decrease when we look at 24 to 25. So when you look at the forecast that you have in front of you, you'll see that there's a decrease in property tax. That is due to the fact that we're going to, we've already collected on a delinquency that was available when them all sold this last time. So there was a bump and then it comes back down. So if you were wondering like, how's our property taxes decreasing? Well, it's just because there's an odd collection in there, so if you notice that. Our income taxes are leveling out. We had been steaming along pretty heavily there and they've started leveling out at about a 3% rate. We've been experiencing a lot more than that in the past. So it shows you that in the area that wages are not going through the roof, which maybe will help with inflation in the long run as well. So hopefully we'll see how that pans out. We are spending 74% of our revenue on salaries and benefits. So as long as we're not over that 80% mark, we're doing okay there. And so everything is on target as far as that is concerned as well when you look at our budget for the year so far. And I have a note here that says that we're moving our purchase services into salaries. So we do have our Title I folks moving over from the ESC back to us as part of our literacy program that we've developed. So those are some highlights that we're going to have as we go through here. All right, so the forecast shows a positive cash balance through June 30th of 2028, which is good. We always want to do that, otherwise we'd be getting into fiscal watch. Overall, overall long-term projections are holding on target. I haven't seen anything that concerns me at this point. And we are in the second year of the state budget fair school funding plan. And so hopefully in the next biennium, we will get the full phase in of that. Since I've been here, our funding formula has shown that the state should pay us more than we've received the entire time. And that hasn't changed, but maybe after this goes through for those two years, we'll finally get it, get paid what they say we're supposed to get paid. So who knows? Or it'll change by then, which is probably more likely to happen, right? So at this point, we'll see, but it could, it could end up where we're finally on the formula. And enrollment is going to be a key factor as state funding is going to be based off of individual students. Once we get onto the formula, every kid matters kind of thing. Right now, when they owe us more money than they're paying, as our, our enrollment's actually fairly volatile. It's anywhere from 3,100 to 3,200 in a given day. So there's a lot of transientness. So the average is 3,150 when people ask, because it just depends on what day it is. You'll notice here that this has flip-flopped a few times, back and forth, as far as who pays more, locals, states, sources of income. In this case, 50.9% is coming from the state and 49.1% is coming from local sources. It changes a smidge from November, but not very much. So things again are on target for where we expect them to be. Operating expenditures, you'll see wages and benefits are the biggest chunk of this. And then purchase services, which contains a lot of money that, again, that we get, we have employees through the ESC. $1 million of that is what I've set aside to move back into wages and benefits on the five-year forecast by moving those Title I teachers over to Pickle contracts. This chart here is the revenues versus expenditures. You'll see the revenues on the blue, the expenditures on the red, and our ending cash balances we go. So it continues to show that we will see an increase in our ending cash balance through FY '27. And, you know, if I had a crystal ball, I could tell you what's going to happen in '27 and '28. I don't. I always try to really focus on the first three years. As, as long as those are positive, we're doing fine. It looks like for sure four years we're going to be fine. So the fifth year, who knows, right? I mean, the state even has been talking about getting rid of these forecasts. I don't want to get rid of them because I like them because it keeps us focused on what's happening. But they're not accurate because no one knows what's going to happen five years from now. So they put a bunch of like pressure on people to do these, but then, you know, nobody has a magic ball and they only have a two-year budget, so they can't even tell you what they're doing in '28 right now. So we'll see what happens with that. There is a bill that they're talking about getting rid of that, so we'll see. And then this chart is showing you the breakdown by object. And so again, wages, benefits, our next is purchase services. And then you'll see our supplies is very minimal, the overall expenses, the capital is even less because we have a permanent improvement account. And then the other expenses that are on there are typically the money that's collected or charged for bank fees and for fees to collect income and property tax is usually what that top line is on other expenses. And this is a chart just showing where our ending cash balance is. And on the 60-day mandatory cash ratio that is on there is the orange bar. So you can see we're well above the orange bar and in line with what our policy says for the board that says that we should have no less than 180 days' worth of cash on hand at any given time. Otherwise, we have to start talking about a levy, so we are well above that. At the last calculation on my dashboard, it was at 218. So we're, we're above the 180 threshold. I'll continue to be vigilant in paying attention to the state funding, fair school funding plan to see what ends up happening. Hopefully they'll, they'll phase in the next two years. It actually has panned out well for the state. They've paid less money in education than what they expected to because the formula has been doing its job. So they're actually winning in this scenario. So it probably will end up happening because they figured out that it wasn't going to like drain them completely like they initially thought. And we'll see what else happens. I mean, there's always these extra things that they, they throw at us when it comes to PD. And then like, right now, we're fingerprinting the entire district. JoJo, you might recall when you worked here, you never got your fingerprint done again after your first time. Now we have to do them every five years. So I've truck-loaded probably half of our district back in here to get their fingerprints done. Nobody's sent me a check to pay for all that. So it's just things like that where they mandate like now that fingerprints have to happen every five years. Everybody has to log in.
To make sure you're not getting in trouble during that.
Well, now, yeah, now, now we're, yeah, you can't get in trouble anymore because we'll get an email. The three of us will get an email that basically says you got to log in and confirm that this person works for you. So now our classified staff will also be in that system. Our certified staff have always been in the system and they renew their license every five years. But now we have to do, anybody who gets a paycheck from us has to be fingerprinted every five years so that we can keep track of that. So if anything hits it, the state notifies us that you had a DUI in Cleveland, we'll know about it.
Are you staggering them or doing all at once?
We have to do them all at once. So people are coming in, I mean, they're scheduling a collision coming in nonstop right now, getting their fingerprints done. Nonstop. But I'm just saying, we, we keep getting stuff that they're not paying for. It's another rule, another thing we have to follow and we figure out how to make it happen, just like the science of reading that we had to do. So.
How expensive is it to do the fingerprinting?
Huh?
How expensive is it?
I think it's $76.
Person?
Yeah.
Pay for work?
Well, it's all electronic, but it's, it's, it goes to the state. Bureau of Criminal Investigation, it goes to the Federal Bureau of Investigation, so it goes to both of them.
And so will that go for any volunteers as well, any of the?
Our volunteers always get fingerprinted if they're going to be, have any chance of being alone with a student.
On a yearly basis?
Five years, we do the same. We've been doing that consistently since we've been doing, we've been doing that consistently. But it's getting all of our certified people back in. Once they've worked for us, I guess we've, in the past, just sort of assumed we would know. Normally you would tell your employer, hey, I've got this situation going on, but not anymore. They want us to put them all in the database, so that's what we're doing. Your elected officials, you're allowed to commit crimes and keep your elected position. It's facts. I mean, I can't. Ask Capitol criminals that work in Washington DC, I don't know.
You're also not working directly with the children. You're not, you're not tending to them in the way that teachers do and aides do and so on. If you're in the buildings, you're with us.
It really isn't a lone, it's an alone thing. Good news is we're financially stable. I don't see any issues where we're at currently. There's going to continue to be wage issues as we're competing for teachers, as the shortage, I think, continues to ratchet up. It's Tony's world and some days it's pretty difficult.
It's been a week already.
So we'll just have to see how things go. People are, people are definitely in the mode of trying to steal employees from each other and that kind of thing. So I think it will continue to put pressure on us to stay competitive. Any questions? All I have is good news at this point.
Looks good for the next couple of years. Two or four years at least.
Yeah. I, I don't know that I've ever wrote a five-year forecast for the fifth year, it's like yay hooray.
Because you never know.
You don't know what it's going to be. I don't want to false hope and the next thing you're, but you told us.
Right. All right, now we'll just move right on to the treasurer's agenda.
All right. The month closed, exactly where we expected to be. And we're again on target to finish another year in the black. Were there any questions about our financial reports for May, right, actually April? And then I have the approval of the five-year forecast that I just talked about. And then the third option, item on there is the purchase of the 2020 F-350 van. And it is sitting on the south side of the building out here, if you want to see it sometime. It is going to become the mobile learning lab. Initially, it's this bookmobile idea, but now we can probably do some STEM out of it because of the size of it. And we can also take the planetarium and like, we could drop it in a park one day somewhere and be able to bring it out to the public.
Planetarium in it?
No, they can carry it around.
The big planetarium that we have, we can take and, and take it out and move it around to different places, load up a generator and.
Is this the same type of vehicle that was originally going to be used for the bookmobile that was with the pitch, pitch Pickwa a couple of years ago?
Correct. So this is all grant money that's being used. So there was no tax money involved in the purchase of the, of this vehicle. It's all grant and donations. So that's pretty cool too by itself. But it's going to segue right into what Dwayne's going to talk about here shortly. So you'll see it's all tied together with, with our literacy initiative. When we talk about what we've done with our title teachers and our whole reading program and dyslexia. Now we have a way to outreach and then he'll talk about the next part of that. So it's all, we're doing good stuff.
Are we going to have a bookmobile in the summer still?
That's exactly what this will be. It'll be, it'll have shelves in it, have books in it, kids can come up in it. It has rear air conditioning in that area. It's going to be pretty slick, much better than.
Huge kudos to Emily who, how long has she worked on it? I mean, she, she found it, she followed it on gov.com. She, she was so relentless about it. I mean, she was updating us every day. I mean, she, I give her full credit for finding this and making this happen. She was very, very instrumental to, to Dwayne so.
She found a good one. I drove it back from Melbourne, Florida and it was, it's a great, it rides great. You wouldn't even know any different, so it was good.
You had to go to Florida to pick it up?
Mm-hmm. It's a good thing too, it's not rusted. It only has 22,000 miles on it.
There you go.
Right? They've got it for a third of the price of what a new one costs because we looked like, you know, just to see what they were. Yeah, you can spend anywhere from 125,000 to 150,000 on a new one, so.
Nice.
No rust because it's in Florida.
All right.
It's in great condition.
Any other questions for Jeremy? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion for the approval of the treasurer's agenda.
So moved.
Second, all right. JoJo and Steve. Jeremy, would you like to call roll, please?
This is Mick Mackin. Mr. Frazier. Mrs. Mars. Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Ford.
Aye. All right, moving right on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce something we've been working on for quite some time in partnership with the Pickle Public Library. The program is called Success Starts Here, 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. And you might remember, let me get this to work here, that I've shown this data before. So this is our kindergarten readiness scores. And again, this is the data that we have to, to gather on kindergarteners that are coming into our school setting. So they come in, we have to assess them those first weeks. And it shows us how students are ready for kindergarten, how they're ready to be learners, how they're prepared to do the things that they're going to have to do as a kindergarten student. And we're noticing these trends happening within our data. So you can see a lot more students in the red there called emerging readiness, which means they're not ready. They're just not having the skills that they need as they come into kindergarten, so they're already behind. We've got to do a lot of work to get them caught up. The green arrow pointing down, that, that's the one we really want to go up because those students are demonstrating the readiness that we need to really hit the ground running and to just really take them through the curriculum and make things happen for them. So when they come behind, it takes a lot of effort for us to get them caught up. It can take years in fact. So we're really trying to find ways to reach out to the, to the community and get some things to happen so that our kids coming into kindergarten have a better advantage and they're more competitive with their peers. So you can see a lot of research is showing that students are coming to school more and more without experiences to text. A lot of that has to do with the cell phone and technology that kids are given at a very, very early age rather than books and engaging in stories like, like what some of us did when we were kids. And when that happens, kids now don't have concepts of letters, the alphabet, even counting numbers, those basic things that, that we all knew and maybe took, took advantage or, or took for granted when we had younger kids. So again, those kids are kind of just coming without, about that sense of, of how, how to be ready for kindergarten. So we got this program. It's easy as one, two, three. If we could get, Eric, if you could click on that link, this will be on the Pickwa library page. And it's called Success Starts Here. And if you could scroll that down for me, please, Eric. Keep going if you would, right there. One, two, three, up, little, up a little, there you go. Register for the account, which is very simple. They can choose one of the challenges, which is right below, and then they can start reading and they can log in. So if you scroll down just a little bit, Eric, you can see two of the challenges that are already up there. So a parent, once they register, they can log in there. Once you read books with your kid, you can go on there and record it. It will track it for you over time. You don't have to keep any papers, you don't have to worry about losing anything. It's all electronic. We'll be able to see that within the school district, the library can see that, the parent can see that and they can watch that student progress through the program. If you could go back for me, please, Eric. What does it look like? So if a kid is born right this year to one, it would be three books a week. And some parents will say, well, it's just a baby. How are they going to know, you know, what I'm reading? It's, it's not so much that they will, but you are developing the brain of the child when you're reading and you're engaging in language with that child. So colorful books, good, good photos and good stories, all those are great experiences for the kid. It's similar to taking them to the zoo or out to other experiences, shopping, talking to the kid while you're shopping, just giving all those experiences that help them grow. If they're between one and two right now and you want to participate, it would be five books a week. Between the ages of two to three, it would be seven books a week. Between three and four, 10 books a week. And between four and five, if you want to try to meet the challenge before kindergarten, it'd be 19 books a week. All very doable. Reading stories to your kids, very fun. Sometimes it can be the same book. Once a kid really likes a story, sometimes they like to hear it over and over. There's nothing wrong with that. The whole idea is you're experiencing literacy with your child. We're going to have designated milestones. The readers will be earning things like certificates and books. And we have lots of other prizes lined up that we're working on. We've written a couple of grants and we actually received some funds just this last week. We, we found out that we're going to get some, we don't know how much yet, but we found out we're going to get some that will help support that. So we're excited to be able to give them that motivation. But more importantly, the readers will be making those lifelong connections to books. They'll be making great strides to getting ready for kindergarten, which is the real prize in participating in this. Just some other things that parents can consider. If they get to the Pickle Library right after the kid's born, they can actually get a library card. A lot of people don't know that. But they can get that library card and start having just unending resources of books that they can have access to. We encourage them to check out the monthly guide for all the special programs that our local library has. They put together a calendar every month that is just full of activities from all the way, from birth all the way to senior citizens. They have a great, great program so parents can go there and engage in activities as well as their own kids. So we really do encourage that. You heard Jeremy talk about the Pickle City School's summer bookmobile. We'll be getting that up and running again. That runs through the city, follows the food program that we have in the summer so kids can go get food. And then while they're there or while they're waiting, they can pick up books, they can keep them for the week, bring them back, check out new books. Again, just a great free service for the community and kids of all ages. We have students within our district that will bring little brothers and sisters to the bookmobile. We give them books too. We really want that opportunity for them. The Parents as Teachers program is really important. You can contact the school district for that. They will work with you on not only reading programs for your children before they get to school, they'll also do a lot of social activities with your child, which is also equally as important. The Imagination Library is a free program that parents can sign up. You can actually get to the Pickle Public Library website. There's a link in there for the Imagination Library. You sign up for it and kids from birth all the way to the start of school can be gifted books for free. They'll mail them right to the house. And again, it's another resource for you to, to participate in. And one thing I just realized I didn't put up there is of course the, the Reading Summer Library Program that happens every year. Last year was a record number of students that have participated and they're really hoping that they can continue that trend. We are too, because it gets kids reading through the summer, prevents that summer reading loss while kids aren't in school. And it's a very fun program for kids to participate in. So again, just to point out that the Summer Reading Program or the Success Starts Here with Reading 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, it's very doable. It will be a great activity for parents to engage with their children. It's free. We'll provide lots of incentives for that. But again, the ultimate thing is we're working toward trying to reach parents before they enter school, help them with resources so that they can help their child get ready for kindergarten. And a special thanks to Vera, Braylon, Bo and Andromeda. They, they helped us with this photo shoot. They're all students from Washington, so they were very eager and they were very great at modeling their, their books and their reading. Any questions about that?
Was the, I'm assuming the red line with going up was contributed, basically, I mean, a lot of that's due to COVID as well, right? I mean, you got kids out of school.
It could be, but I will tell you, I, this is, you know, I'm ending my 31st year in the district and as long as we've had CROs scores, we have had the lowest CROs scores in the county for as long as I can remember. Pickwa has had the lowest, lowest scores.
Because it looks like it's, for the longest time, it looks like it just kind of.
Right. It's kind of been level.
Staying in the same level.
But it, it could be a combination of that. It could be a combination of, again, technology being in kids' hands, lots of different things. We don't have that exact, you know, information other than the fact that we've noticed this trend and we feel like we just have to do something about it. And the hardest thing we have is we don't have direct contact with those people. We don't know when a family has a child or if they're moving in and out of the community, how to really make that connection. So our greatest effort was really joining partners with the Pickle Public Library and trying to get as many people as we can to that so they can help support the partnership in getting kids to read because that's their mission as much as it is ours. Our hope is that we can get kids really engaged in reading and give them some kind of goal to shoot for and some kind of goal to, to achieve that will, will help them.
I will tell you that 70% of the kids in Miami County are signed up for Dolly Parton eligible, that are eligible to be in the program, signed up for that program, so hopefully.
Super easy to sign up, a free book for your kid, and they're good books, really good books. But again, I, you know, I'm on the library board. Jeremy serves as the treasurer there, so I, I know what the Pickle Public Library does too. They have great programs and I just really encourage people to participate in those. Maren, did you participate? You, you did that as a child, right?
I did, and now I work there.
Yeah, yeah.
Ready to say that she's.
Yeah.
Want to see somebody who's working there this summer.
Yeah.
Our valedictorian will be there this summer, helping with the summer program.
Down in the ba, down in the basement? Okay. That's the coolest place to go now at the library. It's, it's fun.
It, it truly was one of my favorite things to do with my kids was reading. And we did it from the time they were born all the way through. I mean, we just always read books. My parents did it, my, my siblings did it with them, their aunts and uncles. It's, it's just a, it's an easy way to get kids into literacy and text and sharing really great stories.
I liked reading to mine when they wanted to say they wanted to read it to me because they've had it memorized because it was read so many times.
Fantastic.
So we would turn the page, I'm reading it.
Yeah.
And they would read the page and it's like, oh my goodness, Big Joe, the truck driver.
Yeah, yeah. Every one of my kids found a favorite book and I bet we read it 100 times and that's okay. And you can record that each time. It's again, getting engaged in the story, getting text in front of the kids, pointing to words, saying them out loud, saying it together, them memorizing the story and telling it back. They're all great, great ways to, to get engaged in literacy. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, well, we're going to hope that this is a success and we can continue to get that out. The library is a great partnership with us, like I said, and we're going to work really closely together to try to get people engaged in this program. Under other, just, we had our staff appreciation week last week and it went really well. We do really appreciate our staff. While we recognize every year our district employee awards. So our Chief Teacher of the Year was Sarah Jane Magato. Support Staff Member of the Year was Sarah Patrizio at the Pickle Junior High. We had two Coach Advisors of the Year, it was a tie, and the committee decided they wanted to recognize both of them. They didn't want to try to break the tie. So Macarena Studa Baker, who's a volleyball coach, and Carol Palmer, who is a part of our music program. Our Substitute Teacher of the Year is Kamora Schrieker. And our Friend of the Schools is Mike Lumpkin, who has just been a super longtime friend. I can tell you, they were great candidates and nominations in every one of these categories. It was, it was a, a hard thing to pick the final people. And all of them are Pickle graduates with the exception of one person. So we're proud that they are great alumni as well as they continue to serve our district and our students. Sports, just to wrap up, we're wrapping things up right now. We had really good numbers in all of our spring sports. The numbers were a little bit higher. We had some really, I think 14 wins in the softball team this year, a really young team. So they're going to really grow, I think, and get better as they go. Our baseball team was one of the, the most winning seasons we've had recently. Track, any updates on track that you want to share?
League well. Another boys team got fourth place. And then we have districts, Winston, Friday, down in Troy.
Yeah, so tomorrow, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, well, good luck to that. We are hosting the Division Two and Three divisions this week. Districts for Division Two at the regional meets will be next week. We predict that'll probably bring about 20,000 people to our community. So Alexander Stadium continues to be such a great draw for people and for us to use. to be such a great draw for people and for us to use that for regional and district kinds of things. So excited about that. Congratulations to our seniors. We're going to be recognizing those seniors at graduation coming up, and we're going to approve all the graduates tonight that will be there. So we have 240 graduates this year. That's down 10 from last year. So far, we're at $2.3 million in scholarships, and that number continues to go up. Beth keeps calling me, saying, "Just got another one, just got another one." So I'm just going to leave it at 2.3 for now. 43% of our students have identified going to college. 4% are identified going to a trade school or having an apprenticeship right now. 53% indicated they're going to go into the workforce, and we have one student that's joining the military, the Air Force. One student was accepted at the John Hopkins College, only 7.3 acceptance rate there, and this is the first student we've ever had from Pickwa get accepted to that university. So quite an accomplishment. That's Asha Schulman. And then one student, Sebastian Carabinus, is graduating with his associate's degree as well as his high school diploma. So he just got, he's graduated from Edison, and now he's going to graduate from Pickwa next Friday. So really proud of all of them. We have two very special people tonight. They've been waiting patiently, so thank you for that. Our valedictorian and our salutatorian, it's tradition that we bring them and introduce them to the board and let them talk a little bit about themselves, and then you're welcome to ask them some questions. So we have a mic here that I'm going to have you come up to, so we'll start with our valedictorian, Maren Funderberg. Maren, would you come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and where you're heading?
Do you want to tell us what you've done?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Sell yourself to us.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maren Funderberg. I've been a four-year member of, of course, you all have been here. I sit on like the Warren's Student Safety Council. I'm only 16 states across the state on that. FEMA's Region Five Re扶持ness Council, Kevin Love's Mental Health Advisory Board. And at the school, I do, I'm the President of National Honor Society and Vice President of Senior Council. I plan on going to Ohio State in the fall and majoring in political science.
Very good. Any questions for Maren?
What's been your favorite, favorite part about your school career here at Pickwa? Any special highlight that you can think of?
I think there's just been a lot of good memories that I made, honestly, through sports and education, even just being in the classroom. I've met a lot of new people. I've been a part of so many different councils. I don't think any of that would have been possible if I wasn't here.
Interesting. You were grade accelerator, right? So you skipped a grade.
Yeah.
Which, was that fifth or sixth?
It was a little weird. I was supposed to skip second grade, and then I went between two grades up until sixth grade.
Okay.
Tomorrow night's Excellence in Education. What teacher did you pick? Who did you...
I nominated Kyle Sarin.
Yes, congratulations.
Our salutatorian is Simon Baker.
My name is Simon Baker. I've been more involved with sports than I've been in clubs like Mary. However, I am a part of the Five Day Kappa and National Society of Leadership and Success at Edison State. I've been involved with cross-country for four years, swam for three, and tripped for four years throughout my high school career. And I plan on attending U of U for mechanical engineering in high school.
What's your favorite memory of high school?
Probably this year, cross-country team. It was just, we had a good group of kids and great in there, obviously, and it was just some of the most fun I've had.
And you were injured for a while, huh?
Yeah.
But you were back in it this year?
Yeah, I had to sit out my junior year, but I still went to support stuff, so I got to take everyone around, but...
Where did you injure?
Completely torn my ACL.
Did you swim with the torn ACL?
Yeah.
I thought so. Water therapy, that's what that is, right?
Yeah, a couple people were concerned, but...
Yeah.
I'm okay.
Thank you, too. Well, congratulations. Best hair, too.
I actually think you did get nominated for best hair, didn't you, Vera Glass? Both are going to get the deliver speeches at graduation. I've read them, and they're very good. I'm anxious for you to get to read them for people and for you all to hear what they have to say. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to skedaddle if you'd like.
We'll be held against you.
Yeah, you can skedaddle. It's fine.
You have a lot of other things to do, I'm sure. So have a great rest.
Thank you, guys.
Just a few dates. Tomorrow is the academic signing day for all the students that are going to college. We do that very similar to the sports signing days, so great event. Again, Excellence in Education, where the valedictorian and the salutatorian get to pick their favorite educator. There's a really nice banquet that's held countywide that's sponsored by the Countywide ESC. The principal and myself get to go, and they get to talk about their favorite educator. So they go up and they tell who they nominated, they talk about that person. So it's always very touching and just a great evening.
Where's that going to be?
At the Council on Rural Services here in Pickwa. Senior exams are Friday, and that's their senior, is their last day. The Just Us Concert is Saturday, show choir, and they feature all the seniors. It's entertaining and sad all in one night. It's really sad to see that talent go and fun to watch them perform for the last time. Next Monday will be the top 10 events for Pickle Junior High School. Class night will be next Wednesday, where they'll get all their scholarships. And a huge thank you to the Pickle Education Foundation, who sponsors that and gives away thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. The UVCC graduation will be Thursday. Are you participating in that?
I am not.
No? Okay. And then the Pickle graduation is going to be on Friday at 7:00. We will livestream that. We'll get that livestream information out on Monday. That link will go out on social media and all of our sites. So I've already had people from out of state, grandparents and other people contact and say they want to see graduation. So we're looking forward to that. I think that's it.
All right. Moving right on to the superintendent's agenda.
Okay. We'd like to recommend the board approval of a list of donations and grants to Pickle City Schools. It's quite extensive this time, because we have a lot of donations coming in for the Indian Nation Station, for their golf outing that's coming up. We can plug that. Do you have anything you want to plug on that, Jeremy, for the golf outing?
We have two teams remaining of what we have available, so we are almost sold out. So if you want to get in on that, make sure to fill out the form online or call us, and we'll reserve your spot. But we have two teams left to fill.
Really fun event. If you like to golf, it's fun. You'll enjoy it. Spring Creek got a donation from Hearts of Propeller. They're always very supportive, so thanks to them. The Weiss Cup Honor Garden is coming along quite well. There's going to be a special event to honor him the day after graduation. I believe it's at noon on Saturday, right in front of the high school. He will be our guest speaker for graduation, so we're looking forward to him coming to do that. And then Ruth and Gina Apple donated to the football program in honor of John Apple, who graduated with me back in '87. And Kiwanis Club donated to the Key Club, and then U-Matter donated to the Pickwa High School Hope Squad. So a lot of great support that we're getting from the community. We really, really appreciate that. Recommend board approval of the attached student handbooks for the 24-25 school year. And then recommend board approval of the attached list of students for issuance of a diploma for the Pickwa High School dated May 25, 2024.
All right. Any questions for Dwayne? We will do a roll call vote for this because of the graduating seniors list. So I will take a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda.
So moved.
JoJo, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Sean with a second. Jeremy, will you please call roll?
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the personnel agenda.
Thank you. Just want to point out a couple highlights. Number seven, Kathy McCoy, most of you probably know her, and she's been with us for quite some time as a member of the Cook staff, and she's retiring after, I believe I said, 25 years in the update. So thank her for all of her service for our students and our staff. And then Alicia Everman, who you might remember as a school psychologist that was with us for several years, well, four or five years, I think, right out of her training, is coming back to us now to be a school psychologist. She's fabulous, so we're excited to get her back, and she'll be over at the Washington Primary Building. Speaking of coming back, you'll notice that we had a resignation of one of our ASL teachers, and Sarah Taylor, who built that program to the capacity it is right now, which is full, is coming back. So she's a great one to have on our team, and we're excited to get her back, too. So outside of that, you see a lot of internal transfers. So just so you know what that means is for a lot of them, there are those backfilling positions from people going back from being coaches, or they've requested another position within the district. That's what the internal transfer is, and we always put those on here. So that's several of those in the middle that we're doing that with. So kind of wrapping that process up of getting those positions taken care of. June will be big, because we're going to do a lot of those things in the next couple of weeks, finishing out the primary buildings with their positions that coaches had filled, so vacated those positions that we're now hiring for those. So getting close, getting close.
All right. Any questions for Tony?
How many left? Sorry.
We have, I think, intermediate is, has two openings that we're going to be filling this week, this week and next week. I have a request for internal transfer that we're going to consider there. I have three positions at... Five at Washington Primary, but you've got to remember, a lot of these folks were county people that are now interviewing for the jobs, so it's not like we're out searching necessarily either. Doesn't mean they're guaranteed a job, but we are giving them that opportunity. And then at Spring Creek Primary, we have three, I believe. And again, we still, we have county people that are going to be interested in those, so we're not, I'm just posting the jobs externally tomorrow in case we need to go there. And we're anticipating at least one other opening at the high school, but we'll see. That one's just kind of starting to flesh itself out, so hopefully we won't. I interviewed an intervention specialist today, very good, met her at Bowling Green, and we're excited to see if she makes the right decision.
I said that to her, too, so. So we'll see, yeah. But it's going well.
So we're not necessarily a part of the extreme shortage that everyone keeps hearing about all over in the news.
Right now, the shortage is where the shortage was. So special education, I have 10 applicants on a week of posting, and it's not, I'm not going to get a ton more. So that's not abnormal. If we have things like high school science and math, we won't have, we may have 20. But the interesting part was, when we posted social studies for the high school a week and a half ago, I am at 72 applicants right now. So that makes you feel, because if there was going to be a shortage, you would start seeing some of those things happen, too. I'll post primary, and I'll instantly in a day have, I'll probably, the first day, I'll have 35 applicants externally, and then over three or four days, it'll be over 100. So if that holds steady, it's still saying at this point that while we know there's a shortage coming, it's not necessarily hitting as harder than it has in the past yet. But I think we're going to continue to see some of those challenges coming down the road, especially in those special areas, school psychologists, special ed. I mean, those folks are just tough. You've got to know somebody, know somebody that'll talk to.
World languages.
ASL, they don't, colleges aren't producing world language teachers. So you don't have, that's why there's no friends, part of it, and kids weren't taking it. But there's just, ASL is all word of mouth right now, of who we're talking to. But we're fortunate that we have, I have two interviews, one tomorrow and one Monday or Tuesday for that, because that program is growing, but there aren't a lot of programs out there. School psychologist, I think there's Kent that does it now, and I think their program maxes out at like 10, because it's so intensive. And then it takes them a year of internship, and you're looking at a master's plus, I don't know how many hours, closer to a PhD than a master's, I would say, by the time they're finished. And then they have a paid internship, and then their year one starts with the school. So it's just, they're kind of unicorns in those two areas right now, for sure. Three areas are tough, but we've been, we've been really lucky, so fingers crossed.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I will take a motion for approval of the personnel agenda.
So moved.
All right. Do we have a second? Second is Kelly. All right. Jeremy, will you call
Mrs. Mars.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
All right. Personnel agenda is approved. Moving on to new business.
Just a second and final read for the Neola Board Policy Update 42.2 for the winter. Again, as we shared last time, there's nothing really changing in those. It's mostly language. It doesn't change the meaning. So unless you have any questions, this would be the final read for those.
All right. Do I have a motion and a second for the approval of the Neola Board Policy Update?
So moved.
JoJo, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Do we need to roll for that? We can vote that in. Okay. All those in favor of the second and final reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, next item.
This is to approve the replacement, repair of the roof at the junior high, not the metal part, but the flat roof. There are wet soft spots that need to be replaced, and then we're doing another overlay, as well as fixing some of the masonry work to prevent water from getting into the envelope, and then putting up the soffit around the perimeter of the building that's been missing since it was built in hopes to keep the birds and the cold air from blowing into the building. So this, we've designed a different way of getting it set in there so that hopefully that will prevent that from happening, because I think a lot of us have had to chase birds down with a net in the building before. So hopefully this will stop that from happening. So we did not have to bid this work out because it was previously bid out through a consortium, and so it was a way to get it done quickly without the entire bidding process, because we have a lot of different projects going on, and you'll be seeing more of them from me as we go on, and they'll have to be bid out as well. So the architect's trying to help us get through that. And the good news is, is that Kramer Roofing will be doing the work for us, and they've done all the work, repair work that we've had done over the last few years.
Any questions for Jeremy? All right. I will take a motion for the board approval of the Pickle Junior High School roof, masonry, and soffit project for the summer.
So moved.
All right. Kelly, do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor of this, of approving the school roof project, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, it is approved.
How long did you think that day that was to take them?
I'm not even for sure exactly what day they'll start. It's probably going to be a three-week process, if I have a guess, three, four weeks. So it's not a long, it's not a long process. It's not a large section of roof, but there, and I had the breakdown, but we're replacing the flat section, we're fixing the masonry, and then we've got to do the perimeter of the building. So it's not an entire summer project. It's not as massive of an undertaking as some of the other things that we've been doing the last few years, so.
So there won't be need for meetings?
No, no. This will be, think of it as a repair. It's not a full-blown renovation project, so.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I want to take the time to thank Brayden Holva, who is the student representative on the board this year. Thank you very much for being a part of the group. I don't know if you'll be here for the June board meeting, but I just want to take the time, while we, while we had you here, just to publicly thank you, and future's bright for you, my friend, so.
What's your plans?
Um, right now, I'm looking to go into civil engineering. I'm not exactly for sure on my school yet, but my number one is to our Seerville University and University of Maine.
Nice.
Looking to Liberty.
Nice.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Enjoyed working with you.
Our next scheduled meeting is June 27 at 6:00 PM, right here in the board office. So I will take a motion, if no other discussion, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Aye, ma'am.
So do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion, or meetings adjourned.